Okay, we're recording.
So we're going over each priority to make sure that we're okay with it?
Yeah, let's start with the six priorities and uh, we'll comment on a couple of them and so we can clean up easy stuff first. Let's go to the six priorities and uh, if you want to keep those.
Alright.
Yep, here's the handout.
And if I could start on the start, if we could start with you, um, one of the comments that you had I thought was good. Um, the reason I, uh, remember is the, um, we'd like the old priority name for the, uh, the fiscal stewardship. Is that, do we agree on that?
That's one of them, yeah.
Do we want to talk about that real quick and get that one out of the way?
If we're just talking about titles and not the substance, that's one we could make sure.
I, I'll just share with you what I've heard from the group, which is helpful. Um, you'll notice that one of the focus areas were the, um, the unfunded liabilities, both from a, um, employee benefit perspective, as well as the unfunded liability replacing future infrastructure. And where the idea comprehensive came from, I'm just sharing, if you how they got there. The group said, well, fiscal sustainability always sounds like it's in the present. It doesn't always feel like it's forward thinking, so that's how the, the idea of the comprehensive fiscal stewardship came about. I'm not sure the comprehensive gives you any different vision about that, but uh...
As we mulled it over, was there, out of the six, was there any one of that we wanted to, that we, that the group was uncomfortable with? They felt like we didn't, we shouldn't keep it as a priority?
No matter what the title.
No matter what the title, any, just an overall general feeling of the six.
Actually, I have a couple here that are, that are almost dead on, customer service and council priorities and customer service excellence in the city. Those seem natural.
That's a lot better than vibrant urban capital.
Do we, we had agreement, we're gonna keep all six?
Yeah.
Councilman, anybody else?
Yeah.
So let's keep all six and let's start with, uh, we're gonna come back to the, uh, number three, the fiscal stewardship. Let's start with the first one, which is what, what's the first one?
Driving and sustainable business community.
Got the first, uh, that's the, how do we feel about that one? Any comments on that, that we want to change anything?
That's kind of, just, just a thought, just, that is a description of something that might have been happening. It's not an active verb, not an active, uh, there's no verb, by the way. So do you need verbs, and do you care? I mean, I guess we don't, do we?
No, I mean, it's, uh, I, it, it, the discussion isn't, it doesn't show action, doesn't show energy, is that the thought?
Well, driving is sustainable business community, alright.
Driving and pushing forward and keeping businesses worth...
I never subjected to that.
Okay, we're good with number one? Any other general comment on number one? All right, let's go, they'll stay there, and then, um, number two, is safe, safe and healthy city.
Which was an improvement from last, the last.
Yeah, I think we all talked about the, it's good to include the wellness side of the city and have building environment, people have walkable neighborhoods and they're walking and they're out doing things. It ties into so many other things, are you comfortable with that?
Well, the, actually, the only one that kind of bugs me is this residential sprinkler thing.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if that, I mean, that's kind of a tactic, tactic to get to safe and healthy city. I don't know if it really, I mean, you're kind of making a statement, um, before we even actually, you know, it's something specific, I don't know.
Just what's happened as I see it, unless you wanted to do some explaining, Mark, I, my, my talking with Chief Myers is that, on one hand, there's a political solution that's been tried, but it really puts it off for many years.
There is, and I talked to Betsy briefly, uh, in, in private, uh, cause we, I think she picked out upon it earlier, that was even a little bit of a controversial issue, maybe with the, with the council. Um, we have another measure, another priority, uh, um, an action, a focus item. And it was, um, our old performance number of eighty percent of the time, keeping the fire in the room of origin. I can stay with room of origin type, uh, fire goals and we don't have to include the residential.
I mean, why, why don't we just take out, reduce the potential for loss of private through, um, of property damage, um, in newly constructed residential family homes? I mean, that, that's kind of what you want, is you want to reduce property damage and loss of lives in newly constructed, single-family homes, and then how we do that, you talk, that's, that's a discussion, you know, it's not just residential sprinklers, it's probably a hundred things you could, yeah.
Let me see if I can help a little bit here, because I, I know this is a little confusing and even I, my head starts to swim a little bit too. The priority area is going to be the safe and healthy, uh, community, that's the priority. The question will be, as we plan going forward, what are the things that we need to focus on to demonstrate that we're advancing that priority? Right now, we're at this high level of establishing the priority, is it saying what we want it to say? The things below it, you think, like, the, the sprinkler safety, for example, the, the residential sprinklers. That may be an area you want to focus on, or it may not, you may decide you want to focus it somewhere else, but we've got to, we can't, to borrow a phrase from another past city council, we can't always be all things everybody, we need to, we've got limited resources and we want to focus on certain things that aren't getting done in the community. We're gonna have to determine what those are. Right now, we just want to, we're still functioning at this priority level, and if we get down into the focus areas below that, those could shift and may shift from year to year, you know?
But if you, if you adopt this, you're basically telling the community, we're putting sprinklers in new residential homes, and we haven't decided that.
You may not be comfortable with those focus areas, is what I'm saying.
So, so I think I agree with you, uh, no question, let's, if, if the group's in agreement.
I agree with you.
We can take out the, through the installation of residential sprinklers, and we leave basically this, reduce the potential for loss of life, of life and property damage, um, in newly constructed, single-family homes. Now, this is gonna allow us to, uh, and we can even shorten it more than that, and just reduce the loss of life and property damage, period. We can do that through good deployment, we can do that through good tactics.
It doesn't tie your, tie your hands, you're still trying to negotiate as well.
Got it.
I think the agreement you got was a little weak, frankly.
Yeah, and you're not alone, there's a few people.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yep.
Mark, you okay with that? Alright, very good.
Anybody, alright, let's move on to...
Give me that back.
But that's a little volatile throw in there, right?
Alright, so that was, uh, one, two, and then we're gonna keep the fiscal one, but are we gonna, we just, uh, give me a chance to think about it? Do you want to change the title and go back to the original, uh, the priority name, or do we want to keep it fiscal stewardship? I'm sorry, we're on to fiscal stewardship. Number ten, do you have a comment on that?
Well, I don't, I mean, it's, I guess, I mean, what is, what is sound, what, what is it?
Well, we said comprehensive fiscal stewardship.
What was it before?
It was, um, just fiscally sound.
What does that mean, fiscally sound government, and what is that, what's, what's sound, what does that mean?
The tagline was, uh, we invest your money wisely.
Well, to me, fiscally sound means that you're in black, you're not running the red, you're, you're...
Well, not only that, you see, that's where the issue comes in, not only that, but I'm also, but I'm also putting money away for these long-term liabilities. You're gonna get some other future council, some other future citizen down the road.
See, we, we use...
I mean, we have a bill, for example, with millions of dollars to replace aging, uh, artificial turf. That's gonna have to be replaced at some point.
See, we use stewardship in, uh, in a Greek Orthodox community for, uh, how we deal with our finances, so I, I like that.
So it makes, it means something to you, right?
Yeah, I know exactly what it means, but I don't, you know...
We're about fifty-fifty on this, on the table.
More common term might be, uh, fiscal management, if that makes better sense, fiscal stewardship, financial management, financial stewardship.
Comprehensive fiscal management?
Steve, any...
It's gotta be sound. Sound works.
Make sure you're included.
Sound always works, I think, I know most people know what that means, at least outside this group.
Jorge or Steve, anything?
This type of people.
Keep it.
I find stewardship, I actually like the word management, from the layman's standpoint, I think the average citizen or person who lays to it, good.
I don't think the average person knows what it means.
Knows what, which means stewardship. Don't say many.
I probably, I tend to agree with you on that.
That's the problem, that it means different things to different people.
Go back here, anything, comments?
Sound fiscal management.
Sound fiscal management?
Sound fiscal management.
Is there any other term de jour, you know, that, that works?
We do the same thing, Councilman, I think we probably talked over the semantics and words for a good hour. We've been through all of it before, but, uh, it's really what you guys are comfortable telling your citizens.
Comprehensive fiscal management.
You go out there and you're able to explain it, kind of like what you said at the beginning, right? You've got to be comfortable expressing it to them and not having to answer questions.
Yeah, I don't like having to define what something means, it's okay for the elevator, you know, the poster in the elevator, the inside group kind of knows what these things mean.
We know how we're gonna get there, and I think we have the good setting to put the measurements and what's gonna drive it, but we need to make sure that you're comfortable with it, Council, telling the community, and then you're okay with it.
Well, you know, I'm going out there, we're managing here, I, I like comprehensive fiscal management, tell you the truth, that isn't bad.
I don't have a big problem with that.
Can we live with that, comprehensive fiscal management? Can everybody live with that? Let's live with it.
Did you like the focus areas, did you seem to hit the right things there? Which, by the way, they have some overlap with some of the other priorities as well, you know?
Say comprehensive, because it's very broad and it's a lot of things.
It's not just balancing the budget, it's gonna be one of those, it's more than that, yeah.
Right.
We're gonna go back, I think in a second too, and talk about those, the, the second task for us, I don't know, twenty minutes or thirty minutes, is to go back and make sure that we're, that things are written there to achieve what titles you want. So number four is, with community attachment, is that number four?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, how we, what do, what do you think about that? There was an issue with attachment, I remember.
Yeah, it wasn't meaningful.
I would tell you, the group had struggled over this for a while. We had gone from livable neighborhoods to community involvement, to community attachment, to community pride, and everybody has a very different opinion.
Well, the John S. Knight Foundation, it invents a term, and they push it out there in this nice video, it's cute and all that, but it doesn't mean anything in public. Attachment, that word attached.
What are your thoughts, Councilman, you said, you had, you had a comment, was it livable?
Well, you know what's going on here right now, I didn't understand sustainable, okay? Livable life, certainly, and I'm thinking for the people, the people out there that don't know what some of these other mean, they're buzzwords, a lot of buzzwords, and so you want to try to stay away from those.
Well, did you have, did you have a thought in mind on, on a term that you'd like to see, in reference to what you mean, did you have an idea?
Um, I'm okay with it, I mean, what, what are we trying to do here? We're trying to, the city of Las Vegas wants to make people, um, proud of their city, so they're attached to their city, they're part, they're part, they're not just sitting out there by themselves, they're actually attached to the hip, to the city of Las Vegas, and they're engaged and they're also, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it.
But remember, you just had to say a whole paragraph to explain what it meant.
No, you're just attach, well, you're attached, you're, I mean, what, what else would you use besides attachment, community engagement?
You wrote it on a good one two years ago.
So we did, we talked about, uh, livable community, community engagement, do you want to make a comment?
Well, I was gonna say, wasn't the, wasn't the original name attached to the neighborhood, community pride?
Does that rule you for livable neighborhoods?
I think it was community pride, I can't remember why they...
A lot of people didn't like the pride because it associated that we're like, for example, Pride Parade or that kind of an event, not necessarily pride to the community.
Well, attachment, attachment became clear after we actually saw the video, it made a lot of sense, like what we just saw here. And then the word, then the word, yeah, the word became more meaningful.
I can't come up with a substitute.
Okay, let's think about that one, we're gonna come back to that one, uh, in a minute, let's go to number five, how about customer service excellence?
What?
It's a winner.
It's a winner, how about number five, world-class workforce, I happen to like that one.
I'd like it too.
Yeah, let's go back to number four then, and we're back to community attachment, we've got to come up with what you are comfortable with, on that poster and discussing with the community.
I just have a rule, try to keep things simple, you know, just one, a livable community.
Do you think living in a neighborhood is a community, uh, or livable neighborhood, we don't need to, how about...
But a community is more than just neighborhoods.
Well, communities, I always start everything, but, right, neighborhoods make up communities, but, yeah, either way. I think neighborhoods are more personal, communities is more a task to me. Everybody lives in a neighborhood.
I'm, I'm okay with it, I can't think of, uh, uh, a replacement.
Could you live with livable neighborhoods?
Well, yeah.
Does that define what you want your neighborhood to look for, your community?
Did you guys have an argument on this?
You want it to be narrower than...
I think, I think one of the issues...
But, you know, every year you change it a little bit based on more information, so...
What were the, uh, what were the focus areas under that one?
Oh. Really good stuff, really stuff that we really love.
The issue with the, I've heard this before, I wasn't part of this group, but I've heard this before, when you talk about neighborhood engagement or neighborhood attachment, you think of where you live. And here, there's more of a sense of, uh, a whole city.
Right.
So, the, the people, the, the people in Summerlin have any sense of pride or attachment to the things that are happening downtown?
Exactly, that's a great point, and that's what we're trying to do.
So I think that's why they went away from the, just neighborhood.
Maybe it's a sense of community.
We're a city of neighborhoods.
City of neighborhoods.
Are you community involved? Community connection? As I said, we hit everyone.
Let's, uh, think about it some more, and we're gonna go back to the very end, let's go back to, uh, what we're gonna do now, uh, um, we're gonna go back to the first one. A little, get a little deeper, I think, we're supposed to figure out of the things that they added to thriving and sustainable business community, the, 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 around the bullets that followed it, support that, and we want to make sure we're getting those bullets, is that what we're supposed to do?
Yep.
So what, what measures success, what would you find?
Okay, so what's gonna, how are we going to make sure that we meet that, right? And, and that's not included on the slide set?
How do you define success for each one? When do you know you've been successful?
How would we define success for thriving and sustainable business community? Increase in, in employment?
Well, would be, uh, it would be the number of businesses that you, the number of businesses that open up in a certain period of time. Number of jobs that you created over a certain period of time.
Can I ask if the bullet points are the ones we're working on here?
They're not, Councilman, now that's why I'm in this representation, they're not, we're, we're basically, we're gonna leave the slide set for a little bit, we're gonna talk about, what do we think, what, what measures, performance measures will we put in place to meet that title? Thriving and sustainable.
But you have to base, you have to base it on these.
We should.
You have to, I mean, if that's what you're, you have to base it on these bullet points for each one.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't make comments on that too shortly, adjectives and adverbs weaken your team.
Anything, any thoughts relative to, to, uh, business diversity, or, um, uh, wage levels, and, uh, we've talked about number of jobs, is, is it matter to us what level of pay those jobs are?
Creating a set of metrics, huh, is that what you want to try to do?
No, just, just trying to stir up some thoughts, it's... Well, in terms of, you know, how do you define success?
Well, the diversity, the, the spread of the, the diversity of the, uh, of the job market?
You know, we, we actually did come up with some measures, we, we have...
Can you read them off, Jorge?
The first one was net absorption, and net absorption is the difference between how many people move in versus how many businesses close, you want to have a net increase, because even though businesses open and some are gonna shut down, you want to be net positive, so we have net absorption as one. And then we defined it as both in the RGA and citywide, that's two different measures. So what would be another word than net absorption, maybe, to get to what?
Net change, is what it says.
About an increase?
Net increase, net increase.
Not even net increase. Assuming that an increase is not a decrease, you know, we're pushing for an increase.
What you're measuring is a net change, new versus what left is the net.
And that is, that increase.
Where, that's, that's the measure of success.
That's three performance measures right there, we talked about in the last three minutes, the number of new businesses, the number of jobs, and the net change. Is that, can we just stick with those three for right now?
Sure.
Comfortable for number one?
Very good.
Have an idea?
Would the, is net change necessary, though? I'm trying to help us get away from too much burdenage.
Okay.
Again, if it says, if you, if you've made a, if you made a statement about those two things, it's understood, isn't it, that an increase is a...
I don't know, so I, I'm listening to Jorge, it would be, uh, let's say we had, uh, new businesses come in, but we've had more closed in downtown and new businesses on Centennial Hills. We actually had an increase in, in businesses, but the net change is wrong, it's in the wrong direction, I think that's what he's driving.
And so you, well, we're tracking new business, but at the same time, it's got to be a positive. Increase, but the reality is, it may or may not happen depending on our efforts, so it may end up, the economy drives that decrease, yeah, we have control of that, and that's why...
Is that fair, Councilman?
Say it again?
Um, the, we do...
We had more new businesses, but we lost existing businesses.
Yes, yes, that might be an example of where we want to measure both, new business and the net difference.
And, and that's why you want to measure the net change, because you want to end up with a positive change and not a negative change.
Well, I think you need to just have one for diversification, we talk about that all the time, so, the type, the type of businesses that are opening in the city of Las Vegas.
Types of businesses, okay, good point. Alright, let's move on to number two, um, we had a change in number two, we're gonna take out the residential sprinkler component in the safe city. Other than that, how do we tell we have a safe city? I'm gonna give you a couple of examples from fires, so you can kind of take those off your plate if you want. Um, we're gonna have the thirty percent survivability for cardiac arrests, and we're gonna, room of origin fires, maintain the fire in the room of origin eighty percent of the time. Those are two big, high-risk, um, fire things, uh, cardiac arrest, survivability, and keeping fires down.
Those are fire metrics, right?
So now you want to look at other things, the outside of fire.
Traffic, you can do traffic statistics, number of accidents, number of fatalities, number of injuries, pedestrians, so you can, you can do all that, that's easy.
That is easy.
Boy, pedestrian safety is on everybody's mind, it's not gonna disappear overnight.
Part of the safe city, city that you guys talked about, that we thought, everybody wasn't seemed to be encouraged by, was the whole wellness thing. Where we, um, we talked about walkable neighborhoods, uh, people getting out and doing things, bike lanes, um, youth, we, youth programs, do we track the number of youth programs and enrollment? We track the miles of, of, of walkable streets, or how, how do you measure that, bike lane?
Or trails, you measure miles of trails.
Is that what you want to see, things like that?
Well, that would be your success, would be...
Or, or, you know, you gauge the health level of the community, they see studies out there, X percentage are obese, you measure the health level of communities.
Right.
Are we getting healthy?
I'll give you a good example, is, um, the VA, um, is overwhelmed with VA patients, and those VA patients, the, they're coming home from the war, and they're, they're staying, and their home's not doing anything at all. So they're trying to get them, and so they're inundating their hospitals, they can't continue to provide care at that cost. So they're trying to get them to wellness programs, so they get out during the day and do something, so they're not impacting their hospital. We have the same problem here, right, with just normal community, so it's that, that kind of stuff, as a city, we probably ought to have an interesting change, it helps us in fire, right, it'll help, uh, hospitals, of a number of different areas that we're not even thinking about.
Under education, you got this development health impact analysis, I have no idea what that paragraph says, and I...
Say it again?
This one here.
Thank you.
Develop a health impact with the food desert study, that should be completely either eliminated or rewritten. Cause I don't know what that means, so, I don't know if anybody would know what that means, I don't even know how you'd measure that, so...
Did you write that, Chief?
It's food dessert study, I think that was so.
Food dessert study, or is it dessert study, I don't even know if dessert is dessert.
I thought it was farming or gardening. What do I write?
But, but I think the reality is, that's a byproduct of measuring the health of the community, you know, if we build trails, people are gonna get healthy, if we motivate people to load some of our community centers, we exercise, we're healthy, so I think those are components, but I think the measurement is how healthy is our community?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll figure, figure out some metrics for that, okay, and I got to eliminate the food dessert study.
And the word, health impact analysis process, that's BS words.
Say it again, Councilman, we've got one, uh, topic on the table.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you're, you're...
Food desert, but also the health impact analysis process, it's BS.
Jorge, do you know what he's talking about on that one, was that a public works one?
No, what was it again? The desert thing, no, I...
No, no, are there, the one, is, which one is that?
Same one.
Same one?
Yeah, I don't know what that is. What does land use entitlements have to do with food desert?
That's why the whole thing needs, the whole thing needs to be redone.
We'll eliminate that, that.
Yeah, Councilman, what I, what I wrote on my notes is to rewrite and simplify the focus areas.
As long as you don't mix two different things together in that bullet point.
Well, just make them so that they're, they're a little... It is exactly two spots, you have fifteen minutes left.
Chief, I'm just worried about response time.
I'm saying. Alright, number three, alright, number three is, uh, um, we're gonna change that name to comprehensive fiscal management. And so we, uh, how are we gonna measure that, and Mark, you have some good ones already for that, right?
Yeah, well, you know, there's, uh, there's a lot of things we can do in terms of measuring our competitive wages and benefits, we're doing good already. Um, certainly there are, uh, also our ability to track and retain folks, we measure that. Um, so there's lots of metrics we can use, uh, external to the city, even in the private sector as well, so...
Yeah, this is fiscal stuff, so it's easier to measure.
It doesn't talk about your budget, it simply talks about the future.
So your balanced budget is, is a metric?
Yeah, now, there's, um, sustainable, restore, prioritize services, so here's where you'd find, uh, the issue of balanced budget, to, to have revenues, we have to have revenues in excess of expenditures, otherwise we cannot put anything away for those unfunded liabilities, so, not only you have to have a balanced budget, you have to have an excess budget, otherwise you can't deal with the small permissions.
And I think it's important for both of them to know, the long discussions that we had about, um, accountability for directors and really focusing on underwriting, under running budgets, right? We talked a lot about that in a couple of director meetings, so, uh, overall, in an attempt to give you an opportunity to balance overall budget, right? We've had those discussions in every direction.
Lot, lot of discuss, discussion has created more accountability at the department level.
That was one of the, okay, we're off to number four now, and that is, um...
Our community attachment.
No, it is, that's right, we haven't decided, we ought to go back to that.
I would like to say community.
Community right now.
Actually, Brandy, yeah, she might, she said community connection.
Good, community connection.
I kind of like that one, that kind of rings, community connection, a lot, a lot of people use connection, we're connected together.
But if you were connected, you'd be attached.
Yeah, but it's...
I'm sorry, I couldn't help, that's a humor bar, I had to stretch, didn't I?
Any, any easy answers, since we've been thinking about it, on the community attachment, are we gonna change that title?
Community connection, it just kind of rings better, community connection.
You live with it?
Right.
He can live with it, alright, he can live with it.
Attachment is more of a physical type of term, okay? We're gonna change it.
Your new term will be community connection, how do we measure, how do we measure community connection?
Uh, the number of, uh, art and cultural events that we have, the number of parks that we have, physically attractive...
Survey.
Number of graffiti that's out there.
You know, one of the things we need to be careful, careful about is, is the use, how do we measure the usage of those things? And if they're not being used, why not, right?
A park, the park is not enough?
Yeah, well, remember, remember the discussion of community schools, and why aren't they being utilized, let's drive, drive it for us there, and that's so important to our education, I'm off on another tangent, but...
You are.
Just not just the number, it's also the utilization.
So like each of our centers, we, we track how much you see, which is cost recovery, which are less cost recovery, you can build a wonderful center, but nobody uses it?
Right.
What's the point, you can build trails if nobody's using it, right?
You get all that?
Okay, yeah, I get it all. Alright, next item is, uh, number five, and it is, uh, we're gonna keep this one, customer service excellence, we're keeping six too, and we're keeping number six, yeah, so we got to come up with, how do we measure customer service excellence?
Surveys are one way, we have feedback from our community how they're being treated, okay? I think service times.
Service times, yeah.
Service times, great, great, that's good. Service times, we can...
Increase rates.
Secret shoppers, secret shoppers, I like that.
Secret shoppers.
Send you down there in the...
Yeah, I'm down there now, believe me. Yeah, it's their parking ticket. Anything else, I've got it, surveys and, and service times for customer service evaluation. We have town hall meetings, right? Okay, so we have the feedback, right, general feedback.
Town hall meetings, three people show up.
Neighborhood meetings.
Two people there.
Yeah, well-attended neighborhood meetings. Alright, number six, we're almost done, is our last one, world-class workforce, we're gonna keep that term, and how do we measure if we have a world-class workforce?
Same survey.
Same as almost any...
Increase in positive funds, not just survey.
So how do we, um, world-class, so we have to do some comparisons, right? So I know you're gonna compare us in like, retention rate, compensation rate, but then we're gonna have to, how, we have to show that we've achieved something, something.
How, how does compensation define a world-class workforce?
Well, I'm just thinking about retention. But even then, you're right.
Maybe retain a bunch of workers that are...
That's not very good, right? That's a great point.
We have the employee engagement surveys, which we already do.
What do you call those surveys?
Employee engagement survey, that goes out, out to all of the employees.
What does that mean?
Employee engagement is, it's, uh, it's a survey that we all got, that we filled out, it had like, what, thirty-two, thirty-three questions, and a lot of it was... Yeah, I mean, it's sort of intel, yeah, and it's, you know, gauging the response rate, gauging what the responses were, and grading ourselves in terms of how our employees feel about themselves in the city, and how empowered they feel and all that stuff.
How do we measure if we're, like, if we take other major cities around the world, how do we say that our workforce measures up? Is it the number of, our, does our workforce have a, a level of degree that, that others don't, how do we measure it?
We'd have to create a metric for world-class.
That's, that's the problem with it's not world-class, everybody knows what it means, but there aren't really...
This is stuff that we've never measured before, by the way.
I think, I think you're measuring these here, what you're doing is you're measuring these, not, not the world-class workforce, you're measuring, for example, succession planning, is, is there a documented success? So if I'm, if I'm a IT one, how do I become the director of IT? Is that written down, the path that you go through, or?
Satisfaction and recognition.